Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Matt O'Malley. I am the President Pro Tempore of the Boston City Council. This is Margot O'Malley making her city council debut. I'm Catherine Neforos, the love of my life and Margot's mom. In accordance with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 executive order modifying certain requirements of the open meeting law, this Boston City Council meeting is being conducted remotely. Now, we do expect every member of the body to be in the chamber today, which is the first time we've done in 14 months thereabouts. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/city-council-tv. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker. Counselor Bock.
Present.
Counselor Braden.
Present.
Counselor Campbell. Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Asabi George. Counsel Flaherty.
Aye.
Counsel Flynn.
Aye.
Counselor Mejia.
Aye.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Wu. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Counselor Liz Braden will now introduce our clergy member, and after the invocation is delivered, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is my pleasure to introduce Pastor Nikira Hernandez. The Reverend Nikira Hernandez is a queer, mixed-race preacher, teacher, and activist. They serve as a vision keeper in a Native American Paiute and Shoshone ceremony community and as a pastor at Alston Brighton Congregational Church. Their work at the church is focused on meeting the immediate needs of the community, especially food insecurity, and fostering an environment in which everyone experiences radically inclusive love, not in spite of, but because of who they are. It is my incredible pleasure to introduce my pastor, Pastor Nikira.
Thank you, Counselor. Good afternoon, Pastor.
Good afternoon. So lovely to be with you all. I invite you to join me in whatever way it feels good to you. I imagine we have a variety of spiritual traditions or lack of tradition present in the room. So let's start by taking a few deep breaths together. Feel the backs of your thighs on the chair, your feet on the ground. Breathe into that gravity holding you down gently, tenderly on this earth. Another word for breath is the Hebrew ruach, which is also the word we translate as spirit. The air that you're breathing is the same air that your neighbor is breathing, and it's the same air that the trees, the plants, everyone leafing out right now has so generously cleaned for us and oxygenated for us, and that we generously breathe out with more carbon dioxide for them to breathe too. And so we are all connected. Great mystery, great spirit, abiding presence of love. I call on you today to remind us of the ways we are connected with one another, the ways in which the air we breathe is the same air that everyone else breathes, from the maples to the hemlocks, to the deer, to the raccoons and the mice, our dogs, our children, our human children, the counselors in this room. Take another breath and breathe in the same air that the people we serve have breathed. Take another breath and remember the ways that we are all connected. Take another breath and remember the ways in which we are called to serve, the ways in which we are called to remember how to take care of one another. Take a breath and exhale anything that you don't need to carry with you into this meeting. Take a breath and exhale whatever tension is in your neck, your shoulders. Take a breath and remember that it's good to be alive and to be breathing. Take a breath and remember those who are not with us, whose breath has left their bodies, but whose spirits remain with us, guiding us toward right relationship and more love. Take a breath and remember those who have yet to come into this world and those who are young yet, those who we are doing this work on behalf of. Remember the future, the vision that you long to create, the vision that the abiding presence of love longs for, the vision that that love longs to make manifest through our hands, through our hearts, and through our voices. Abiding presence of love, known by many names and by no name at all sometimes. We say thank you for our lives and thank you for this day, and thank you for the opportunity to serve. May we do so with the breath of your spirit. Amen. Aho, Ashay, bless it be.
Thank you very much, Reverend Hernandez, for that inspiring and beautiful message. Now, those that are able, would you please stand as Counselor Braden leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, would you please amend the attendance records to note that Counselor Campbell and Asabi George have joined us?
Certainly.
We are moving on to the approval of the minutes, which is the first order in our agenda. Seeing and hearing no discussion of the matter, the Chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. Now, I'm still going to call a roll call on certain measures, just given the fact that we are still currently under the governor's edict of last March. When we do get to personnel orders, we will revert to roll call, excuse me, voice votes for those, but we are going to continue on certain items to live up to both the letter and the spirit of the order as a roll call. So, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll, and the issue before us is approving the minutes of last week's as presented.
Approval of minutes. Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bock.
Aye.
Counselor Bock, aye. Counselor Braden.
Aye.
Counselor Braden, aye. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, the minutes have been approved.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Moving on to communications from her honor, the mayor. Madam Clerk, would you please read Docket 0686?
Thank you. Docket 0686, message and order for your approval, a declaration of trust entitled East Boston Housing Stabilization Trust Fund. This trust will work to prevent displacement of East Boston residents by establishing a fund to support rent-burdened residents.
The Chair recognizes the Counselor from East Boston. Counselor Lydia Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much to my colleagues. I know we're not voting on this right now, but I wanted to give you some background to let you know why this is before us and why it's specifically only for East Boston, as many neighborhoods are dealing with displacement and dealing with concerns of housing justice. This is part of the Suffolk Downs negotiation and mitigation. It is also part of the affirmatively furthering for housing suggested mitigation that neighborhoods set up their own displacement fund. Well, East Boston led the way, and we have $2.5 million pending at the BPDA that needs to be poured into a trust. We made sure that the trust would not only be created for the neighborhood, but that neighborhood members would be the trustees of that trust. We wanted to make sure we didn't repeat any prior concerns with land councils and individuals having that much control locally, and that is why we are creating it as a mirror trust to be administered and have accounting services from the city, so they will sit and help to make sure that this trust is actually held accountable, it's public, and that open meeting laws apply to the trustees. I am excited, and I wanted to thank the Treasury Department for their back and forth for several months in helping to make sure that we created this corpus and that it's going to be presented and discussed. There are some tiny things that we're still going back and forth on in terms of defining who are the trustees, but ultimately, I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to lead and to see how neighborhoods can help take care of themselves. And one of the best things about this trust is the negotiations that we're doing every single day with every single project, where I'm demanding that developers contribute to the trust. And money from that will go to help people who are rent burden and also help people purchase homes in East Boston. So I just wanted to bring up that context to let you know why I'm speaking and also why it's so narrowly tailored, and I look forward to your support ultimately on this trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards, and thank you for your leadership in this space over the many, many years. Would anyone else like to speak on Docket 0686? Seeing no other takers, Docket 0686 shall be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, would you please read Docket 0687?
Thank you. Docket 0687, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $50 million in the form of a grant awarded by the United States Department of Treasury to be administered by the city of Boston's chief financial officer slash collector treasurer. This grant payment is made from the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund, known as CLFRF, in the Treasury of the United States, established by Section 9901 of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, known as ARPA.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counselor Kenzie Bock. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and I'm afraid we're making a tradition of this today, but we won't. Won't comment on new matters in general. I just wanted to give counselors a little bit of context. Folks may remember that when the administration filed their budget back in mid-April, they also filed an initial proposal about how we might consider the first round of ARP funds. So the American Rescue Plan, as people know, is sending money in a variety of different buckets to the city. One of them is these sort of general funds that can be used on a bunch of different fronts, and there's an initial $212 million amount that came in in May, with the second half, the next $212 coming next May. And as everyone knows, President O'Malley has launched the Recovery Committee chaired by my colleague Counselor Michael Flaherty, and this is a big focus of the councils. The administration's original proposal was, so there's kind of money that would go into the general fund to support things that the city does and to replace lost revenue over the past year. And then there's money that we would provide in grants and direct services related to the economic recovery and public health matters. And the administration's original proposal was to bring to us a request for $115 million for that second bucket, and then kind of have a departmental committee go back and forth on the details after the fact. And one of the things that came up from many counselors early in our budget review process and that I've certainly amplified as the Chair, is that for us, that's not really the right level of democratic accountability that we want to be. We're getting lots of questions from our constituents about these funds. We all feel like these funds are really important to the future of the city. There's sort of three different things we're trying to do with them, right? There's both revenue replacement, making sure core city services are able to continue. We could see revenue impacts for a couple of years down the line, so have to be conservative on that. There's the immediate needs of our economy and of so many people who have been suffering through this pandemic. And then there's the kind of bigger picture, structural, how do we tackle some of the biggest issues of the city with this one-time infusion? So there's a bunch of things going on. And so in response to our feedback about that, the administration instead is proposing this $50 million to do with basically things in that kind of grants-type bucket that really could be spent and are needed in the next three to six months. And so we will be having a hearing on this. In advance of that hearing, you will get a detailed packet of memoranda about all of the sub-proposals, and we'll be doing council scrutiny of it. But I just wanted people to understand that there has been a shift in response to our feedback and in how this is being done. And as we discussed originally, while Ways and Means will be kind of coordinating this through June because of the need to coordinate with budget, obviously, I'm working very closely with Counselor Flaherty and expect to sort of fully hand off the baton on this stuff on July 1st to his committee, but we'll be working in tandem in the meantime. So I just wanted to give counselors that context and thank the administration for being responsive and flexible in terms of the format of how we might consider this appropriation.
Well said. Thank you, Counselor Bock. Seeing no more discussion on this docket, as mentioned, I'm hesitant to refer anything jointly, so Docket 0678 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means, but I will ask Chair Flaherty, Chair of the Committee on the COVID Recovery, to serve almost as a second chair of that hearing once it takes place. So Docket 0687 will be referred to Committee on Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, would you now please read Docket 0688?
Docket 0688, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $256,731 in the form of a grant for the FY21 Community Development Block Grant, known as CDBG. Awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, to be administered by the Department of Neighborhood Development, the grant will fund community and economic development programs. Additional funds were awarded after the previous council vote to accept and expend.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Lydia Edwards, Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Chair Edwards, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, colleagues. I'm actually going to move to suspend and pass for this amount of money. We had a thorough hearing about this, and the adjustment up came from the government adding additional funds to, again, the funds that we already had approved. And so I don't see the point in belaboring this or having another hearing. We had discussed thoroughly where it was going to go, rent relief, making sure that the utility assistance, I can go through the list again, but ultimately, I think it just makes sense to get this money to DND so we can get it to our Bostonians. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Edwards seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0688. Seeing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Docket 0668. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bock.
Aye.
Counsel Bock, aye. Counsel Braden.
Aye.
Counsel Braden, aye. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, Docket number 0688 has passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please now read Docket 0689?
Thank you. That is... Sorry about that. Docket 0689, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $143,990 in the form of a grant for the BJA-FY20 Post Conviction Testing of DNA Evidence, awarded by the United States Department of Justice, passed through the Committee for Public Counsel Services, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the BPD Crime Lab staff time for the Massachusetts Innocence and Conviction Integrity Collaboration Project.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Counsel Andrea Campbell, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Chair Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is Docket number 0689. I'm seeking suspension of the rules and passage of this docket as Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. I don't have access to a printer right now, hence my laptop. I ask that we suspend the rules. This grant is for $143,990. It's pretty self-explanatory. It's awarded by the United States Department of Justice, passes through CPCS, which oversees our public defenders in Massachusetts, and is then directed to the Police Department. It funds the crime lab, which is important, but in this particular context, it's for the Massachusetts Innocence and Conviction Integrity Collaboration Project. It is the first time a subcontract of this kind partnering with CPCS, the District Attorney's Office, the Police Department, has happened. It is about testing DNA, of course, to prove if folks are innocent and if they have been convicted prior to, if they were convicted prior to more sophisticated DNA tools, which are now available. This is much-needed work. It's a small grant. Of course, I think the department would like more, so seeking suspension of the rules and passage of this docket today. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Campbell, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, Andrea Campbell seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0689. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Docket 0689, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bock.
Aye.
Counsel Bock, aye. Counsel Braden.
Aye.
Counsel Braden, aye. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, Docket number 0689 has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Would you please now read Docket 0690?
Thank you. Docket 0690, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $5,425 in the form of a grant for a charitable donation awarded by the Shaw Family Foundation to be administered by the Office of Food Access. The grant will fund additional outreach materials translated in 10 languages to promote awareness of pandemic EBT benefits.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, Counsel Liz Braden. Chair Braden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to suspend and pass this docket 0690. It is a modest sum of $5,225 to help outreach to those who may be in need of food access. Very often, that's the missing link, that there are sectors in our neighborhoods that people aren't aware of the support of the Office of Food Access, and this will help with outreach efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Braden. Counsel Liz Braden, the Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0690. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0690, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bock.
Aye.
Counsel Bock, aye. Counsel Braden.
Aye.
Counsel Braden, aye. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0690 has passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving right along to reports of committees. Madam Clerk, would you please read Docettes 0668 and 0669 together?
Thank you. Docket 0668, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on May 19, 2021. Docket number 0668, message and order for your approval authorizing the city of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, known as the MSBA, statements of interest for their accelerated repairs program for the following schools: William E. Russell in Dorchester, Henderson Upper Wilson Building, the Rafael Hernandez School in Jamaica Plain, and the Boston Day and Evening Academy in the Wheatley Building in Roxbury. submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. And docket number 0669, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on May 19, 2021, docket number 0669, message and order for your approval authorizing the city of Boston to submit to the Boston School Building Authority, known as MSBA, statements of interest for the Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing located at 40 Armington Street, Boston, Mass. submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counsel Kenzie Bock. Chair Bock, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Counsel O'Malley. Last Friday, we had a productive hearing on Docettes 0668 and 0669. I want to thank Counsel Flynn for joining me. As is mentioned in the dockets, this is focused on two different programs. I think counselors know that the Massachusetts School Building Authority has programs where they provide us reimbursement to help with school buildings. And there's an accelerated repair program for which we're putting in four schools, and that only does three types of projects. It's either windows, boilers, or roofs. And I think, again, as the council knows, we've really accelerated our utilization of that program over recent years. So this is the application stage. We put in a statement of interest. They'll consider through the fall. We'll find out in the winter which ones they've actually accepted. And one of the neat things about this is that they then also fund the city to procure a team to actually do the sort of design and details. So what's nice is that you can put an application in without having spent a bunch of money upfront on the exact specs of the project. So that, as is noted here, is for the Russell in Dorchester, the Henderson Upper, the Wilson Building, the Hernandez School in JP, and Boston Day and Evening Academy. One thing we did learn is that because the MSBA does have a rule that when they put money into your schools in these projects, you can't then go and knock the schools down imminently afterwards. So as a result, in order not to limit our options too much in terms of like future new total school rebuilds, et cetera, there's a shift now to doing the boilers in buildings where we've done the roofs, or like buildings where we've already got an MSBA obligation to basically like focus on those so that we don't, we don't create too many places where we're constrained by that state rule. So, yeah, that was the first docket. And then the second docket, it's exciting, and in Counselor Braden's district here to my left, and she has already expressed her support, but we are looking to submit the Horace Mann School for the Core Program. So the Core Program at MSBA is the one that, you know, partners with you on a whole new school. It's partnered with us on the Boston Arts Academy rebuild that's happening in my district, on the Carter, and I think also on the Josiah Quincy as well. So some of our real marquee projects that are coming down the line. And so this would be an application to add the Horace Mann to that list. And again, it's very initial stage. All you say is, we have this need, and then see whether they pick us over the course of the fall into winter. So in order to make that application statement of interest deadline, we need to approve this today. And so I certainly, as a Chair, am strenuously recommending, Mr. President, that both dockets be passed by this body. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Bock. Any further discussion on either docket 0668 or 0669? The Chair is seeking acceptance of the committee report and passage of both dockets. As they are separate, we will have to vote on them separately. So, Madam Clerk, would you please begin by calling the roll for docket 0668? Once again, the Chair seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of this
Docket 0668, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bock.
Aye.
Counsel Bock, aye. Counsel Braden.
Aye.
Counsel Braden, aye. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.[1776.86]
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0668 passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Counselor Bach, the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, also seeks acceptance of her committee report and passage of docket 0669. This is the complimentary hearing, or excuse me, order that we're voting on. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Docket 0669, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Aye.
Counselor Bach, aye. Counselor Braden.
Aye.
Counselor Braden, aye. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0669 has passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are now at matters recently heard for possible action. Madam Clerk, would you please read dockets 0524 through 0531 together?
Thank you. Docket 0524 through 0526, orders for the FY22 operating budget, including annual appropriations for departmental operations for the School Department and for other post-employment benefits, known as OPEB. Docket 0527 through 0528, audits for capital fund transfer appropriations. And docket 0529, audits through 0531, audits to the capital budget, including loan orders, lease purchase agreements.
Thank you very much. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Kenzie Bach, Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. Counselor Bach, the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry to be up and down so much today. We have continued to have many budget hearings, as I know councilors know because you've been coming, and thank you so much to everyone for participation. We, in this past week, last Thursday, we heard from the Office of Economic Development and Women's Advancement. We talked with DND and the Office of Fair Housing and Equity. We also, on Monday, had Public Works and Boston Transportation Department before us. These are all departments tasked with very important work, and again, we had an opportunity for pretty thorough questions from councilors. We had our last BPS hearing yesterday in the morning, and then did take public testimony on BPS in the evening. And today, we'll be having a carryover to follow up on questions that we had asked of the Police Department at 3:00 p.m. And then Thursday, I'm blanking now, but what we have left is about ISD, Do-It, BPDA, parks, and maybe a couple of others that I'm forgetting right now. But the full set of initial department hearings will have rounded out by next Friday, the 4th. So just very grateful for everyone's participation, would ask that it continue for another nine days or so. And then, obviously, we'll be in a position to kind of step back and look at the budget as a whole. But I think this regular scrutiny with the departments is a very important part of our process. I just wanted to, before I yield the floor, just thank Central Staff. It's really been an amazing amount of work, and whether you're talking about Carrie and Candace running it from Central, or Michelle Goldberg and Shane Pack and Cora Montran, they're really spending an enormous amount of time making this process happen behind the scenes. And so I'm just very indebted to them and to my own Budget Director, Emily Brown. So I would ask, Mr. President, that all these dockets remain in committee. Thank you.
Well said, and thank you for noting the exceptional work of our colleagues on Central Staff. Not seeing any further discussion on dockets 0524 through 0531. They shall remain in the Committee on Ways and Means. Moving right along to motions, orders, and resolutions. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0691, Counselor O'Malley offered the following order for hearing to discuss an update on the City of Boston's Building Energy Reporting and Disclosure Ordinance, known as BEIRD-O. And, should I do both?
We'll start with this one, yeah.
Great. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Quite all right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, please indulge me as I once again bend the rules. I will be no longer speaking from the dais in a couple of weeks when it's a little bit safer, but for now, please indulge me. In 2013, I was proud to pass the Building Energy Reporting and Disclosure Ordinance, also known as BEIRD-O, with then-Mayor Tom Menino. Historic in its time, this ordinance required all commercial and residential buildings that were 35,000 square feet or larger, or had 35 units or more, to report their energy and water usage to the City of Boston. That was it. It was simply a reporting mechanism. Brian Swett, who was the Chief of Energy and Environment at the time, summed it up best when he said, "What gets measured gets managed." And believe it or not, it was a somewhat controversial bill in the time, and there was some opposition. It clearly wasn't a unanimous vote of the council at the time, but it was important. And when we signed that, when Mayor Menino signed it, when we passed it, we became the first city in the country to deploy a green building standard through municipal zoning requirements. That's a pretty remarkable statistic when you think how the environmental movement has evolved over the last eight years. And I am incredibly proud when, you know, this is somewhat of a valedictory lap for me, as I will not be a member of this body come January, but people often ask your, you know, thing I'm most proud of, and it's tough to say one, and I'm going to give the political answer, of course, and name about 12 different things, but this one was really special to me when we did it, and it's equally important to me that we update it and that we work to really have some teeth in it, have better mechanisms in place to really address what our goal is here, which is measuring and managing the greenhouse gas emissions caused by buildings in the City of Boston. It's 70% of our greenhouse gas emissions come from cities. We all know it. And I wanted to particularly acknowledge three of our colleagues, Councilors Campbell, Asabi George, and Wu, who all beautifully spoke to this at a forum on environmental issues just the other day. People in this room understand it, but we really need to do everything we can to codify law and policies going forward so that we can address it. I will not be a member of this body this year, but you better believe I am committed to doing everything I can to make Boston the greenest city on the planet for as long as I draw breath. It's important to me. It's important to each and every one of us, and this is a true priority in my final year. So it's very simple. This is a hearing order that's going to allow us to assess what we've done over the last eight years, put some policies and proposals together going forward on how we can change this, how we can strengthen this, how we can codify this. There have been some great early discussions with Chief Mariama White-Hammon, with Allison Brizias, who does yeoman's work up in the Environment Department, and others. So there's some good conversations happening. This is a very collaborative approach, but I am really committed to doing what I can and recognizing the fact that it is already, you know, the last meeting in May. But we can get something done that's effective, makes sense, and that will clearly make sure that we're able to continue to lead in this space going forward. Special shout-outs to Andy Krasner for Mothers Out Front, as well as Andy Wells Bean from B Can and Alternatives for Community and Environment, ACE for incredible partnership and advocacy. We've been talking about this through the duration of the pandemic, and now, as we seem to be able to focus, and the really renewed, the renewed work that this, you know, colossal issue demands, we're going to get this done. So thank you for allowing me to speak on this. I'm happy now, if anyone else would like to speak on it, to turn the mic over or simply just add their name, seeing no takers on speaking. Madam Clerk, would you please add Counselor Frank Baker, Counselor Kenzie Bach, Counselor Liz Braden, Counselor Andrea Campbell, Counselor Lydia Edwards, Counselor Anissa Asabi George, Counselor Michael Flaherty, Counselor Ed Flynn, Counselor Julie Mejia, Counselor Michelle Wu, Counselor Ricardo Arroyo. And docket 0691 will be referred to the Committee on Environment, Resiliency, and Parks. Madam Clerk, would you please now read docket 0692?
Thank you. Docket 0692, Counselor O'Malley offered the following petition for a special law regarding an act concerning the operations of the Boston City Council.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. As many of us know, and we are proof positive of how we're sort of coming back, I will not say back to normal, because that no longer exists, what is considered normal, what ought to be normal, but as we transition back, as we continue to see very, very positive trends as it relates to the coronavirus and as it relates to vaccination rates in the City of Boston, we're seeing easing of some of the safeguards that were put in place last March. Every meeting I begin, I invoke the March 22, 2020 order by Governor Baker, which allows us the opportunity to meet remotely. Prior to that, we could not meet remotely. And again, Counselor Wu deserves credit when she was Council President. She began piloting a Skype, it was before any of us knew what Zoom meant, or you didn't use Zoom, or use it as a different verb. And there were some restrictions that the open meeting law would simply prevent individuals from being able to testify or offer testimony virtually. Many members of this body have already sort of identified this going forward and looking at ways that we can change things, but a more immediate concern that I have as the President pro tem of this body is that unless action is taken, we may not even be able to legally offer members of the administration or members of the public to continue to participate in our proceedings remotely after June 14 or June 15. That's a concern. As I said, you know, it was really encouraging earlier this month when we first convened in person, and again, shout-out to Carrie Jordan, who allowed us to have a hybrid model where certain councilors were being able to participate remotely. That would go away unless action is taken. But that's the future, I believe, and that ought to be the future of how particularly municipal government is run. We want to make it as accessible to members of the public as humanly possible. We want to make sure that we have as robust a debate, and I think that as we sort of take stock on the last year and how our lives changed and how adaptations were made, there are certain positive ones that we should take away from it. The fact that any individual can walk into myriad locations and get a vaccination, that's something that we need to continue as we think about health care. The fact that we were able to really identify a need with our restaurants and allow for more outdoor eating, and yes, cocktails to go, these are certain policies that we should continue. And as it relates to interaction with your elected officials, allowing the freedom of a counselor, of a chair of a committee, to say, "We're going to hold this hearing in a hybrid fashion. Members of the body will be in the chamber, or some may be remote. Members of the administration may be in the chamber, or some may be remote. Members of the public may be in the chamber, or some may be remote." That's really the best way that we can continue an opportunity to make sure that every voice is heard and that we are as effective a body as humanly possible. So last week, I put forth, and thank you to Christine O'Donnell, who was able to turn this around in very, very short order, a home rule petition which would allow the council, this is specifically for the Boston City Council, to continue to conduct their hearings, or at least allow the Chair of the Committee to make that determination for his or her committee, to conduct it remotely, in person, or hybrid, in a hybrid model. This is, I think, a common sense approach. Again, I want to acknowledge the lot of work that's been done by other members of this body, and I'm hesitant to name one of you because I will no doubt forget another of you, but we all, I think, recognize the value in this. Now, the one change that has happened from when I posted this last week and yesterday is a very good change, it's that Governor Baker has said he will file emergency legislation which would allow the extension of those certain open meeting law requirements. The last thing I will say on this, and then I really want to open it up, is that it also underscores what I think is inherently unfair, not that we have such strict open meeting laws, that's a good thing, but the state legislature has exempted themselves from all of these open meeting laws. It's why they can meet behind closed doors. It's why they can have caucus meetings. It's why if we want to do something as simple as a Christmas party or a lunch with the Boston Municipal Research Bureau, we have to publicize that with the clerk. Again, I think we should always err on the side of more transparency and openness, but it just underscores that I think the legislature really ought to reconsider the closed approach that they do to a lot of public input. I'm delighted that we're able to go in the opposite direction, and this is a tool that will allow us to do so. Now, this is a home rule petition. It's highly unorthodox. I see value in suspending the rules and voting on this today. Obviously, any counselor can object to that, and in the spirit of working together, if any counselor has any issue with a suspend and passage today, I will happily work to get a hearing, but the reason why I think timing is more of the essence is if action isn't taken, and it should be, Governor Baker has said that he supports this, we may be in a situation where the remainder of the Ways and Means hearings could not be conducted in the way that they've been conducted, cannot be conducted in the way that we've said they will be conducted going forward. So my request is that we suspend and pass. Again, I will happily defer if any councilors have any issues. Thank you very much. Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from East Boston, Counselor Lydia Edwards. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I wasn't prepared to speak on the suspend and pass part. I had other things that I did want to acknowledge. I think this is pro-parent. I think this is incredibly, by that I mean people who are working and they have their children with them, being able to log on to a meeting with their child and being able to participate. I have seen an increase in participation of working parents in my meetings, in meetings with the City Council, and they're able to do so at a level that they just couldn't before. This is inclusive of folks with disabilities. This is inclusive of people who do not speak English as a first language. As we've seen, immediately, they can log on to a channel and hear simultaneously the language that they normally speak in order to participate, and also can communicate back to us in a way that we are now also getting translation back to us of all of our constituents. So this makes sense. I wanted to just note the, some of my colleagues, I think, who are part of the digital infrastructure build-out, again, acknowledging Counselor Wu and Counselor Flaherty for really kicking that off initially, but now, today, we're with Counselor Mejia, Counselor Braden, Counselor Flynn, we're pushing for a digital infrastructure analysis of our city, but also to make sure that we have standards also for how we are going to move in this hybrid. Some people choose go-to-meet, some people choose community, some people choose Skype, some people choose Zoom, and I'm talking about different city departments. Some allow people to participate, some of us shut us all off and all of our cameras so they can't see our faces, and then they just speak at us. There is not a consistency, and so we have the ordinance pending, right, for digital ordinance, so these two marry each other very well. I can say I will trust my body, as my colleagues, as to whether you feel a suspended pass is necessary as Chair of Government Ops. This would have normally come to me. I'm speaking off the cuff. I kind of, I don't feel comfortable not having a discussion about it. That's just maybe because I'm the Chair of this committee, and normally, even when we, for, I'll give you an example, and I want consistency, Counselor O'Malley, when the clerk had noted the lobbying rules needed a fix, if you'll remember, when we first were still meeting, and the clerk wanted that fix, and we were discussing how that would happen and whether it would come, and we thought it made sense to, even in that brief moment, to talk. And if we're going to talk about transparency and why we definitely need to make sure that we have this process, that's where, I'm speaking from my heart, I'm speaking that way. So I'm not trying to say yes or no, you should or shouldn't do that, but if we consistently made even the clerk come back for the, to speak about something that was a quick fix on the lobbying law, I do want to note that to my colleagues that we did do that, and we had the working session. We had the working session on, with FAST, on the special election. We did the work, and I have been about that. We did the work and I have been about that hearing move and stuff. So I want to be consistent as well. So to my colleagues, if you disagree with me and feel that this should happen, I also understand that and I trust your judgment, but I feel I would be inconsistent.
Sure. And again, I will, I'll take point of personal privilege. I'm happy to have a hearing. I would just say the difference here is that there's no council meeting now, and I've no doubt you have been just remarkable turning things around. I know we could get one quickly. There's no council meeting next week. We would then have to, we of course would have to have a hearing ahead of time and then the vote the following week, which would come right up on what the date of the expiration of the emergency orders would do. All this does is keep the status quo extended and it would allow the chair of a committee to make the determination specifically to how they would hold their hearing. Happy to have a hearing on that, but again, I think it's essentially just giving us a little more of a runway and the whole thing very well could become moot if the governor's home rule or his emergency order is extended. But happy to have a little more discussion and then we can circle back on this before we vote. Chair now recognizes the district councillor from Beacon Hill, councillor Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I would just say that, I mean, if we do not pass such a home rule and if the governor doesn't act, then I think just everybody has to, like the logical consequence of that is that we have to be prepared starting, let's say, June 16th to have in-person hearings, right, without, I mean, the thing about in-person hearings is without capacity limits, et cetera. And I think there is a little bit of a trickiness here in that the administration's policy announced, at least so far on City Hall, is to open the building up to all comers on July 12th. So it's sort of a month ahead and once the rules are gone, they're gone. The exception, as the president said. So I sort of think that the state level is going to figure this out because we're far from the only body with this situation. But certainly it's my instinct that if we waited until the 9th, that there is vanishingly small chance that we would get something. If the state legislature hasn't acted and we pass something on the 9th and then, you know, the mayor signs it the next day, it's Thursday, Friday, and then we're talking about Monday, Tuesday, I just think the chances that we're going to get the legislature to pass something like this through for us before the 15th are low. So I guess I would just echo the president that if we want this belt and suspenders, I think there is a pretty strong argument from a timing perspective to act on it today. Thank you.
And I would just add again, I apologize. I neglected in my remarks, I spoke with Representative China Tyler, who is the, I don't know, the chair of the Boston delegation and she's fully supportive of this and is happy to sort of, to work her channels once we advance something. Any further discussion on docket 0692? All right, I'm going to take cosponsors first and then we'll sort of decide. Any councillors wish to add their name as a cosponsor to 0692? Madam Clerk, please add councillor Arroyo, councillor Baker, councillor Bach, councillor Braden, councillor Campbell, councillor Edwards, councillor Saby George, councillor Flaherty, councillor Flynn, councillor Mejia, councillor Woo. So I guess I will ask for suspension of the rules, but again, if, I mean, if anyone, if the chair of the Government Operations Committee or anyone else has any concern, then we'll have a hearing. But I am moving for suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0692. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Docket 0692, councillor Arroyo.
Yes.
Councillor Arroyo, yes. Councillor Baker.
Aye.
Councillor Baker, aye. Councillor Bach.
Aye.
Councillor Bach, aye. Councillor Braden.
Aye.
Councillor Braden, aye. Councillor Campbell.
Yes.
Councillor Campbell, yes. Councillor Edwards.
Present.
Councillor Edwards, present. Councillor Saby George.
Yes.
Councillor Saby George, yes. Councillor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councillor Flaherty, yes. Councillor Flynn.
Yes.
Councillor Flynn, yes. Councillor Mejia.
Aye.
Councillor Mejia, aye. Councillor O'Malley.
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley, yes. And councillor Woo.
Yes.
Councillor Woo, yes. Mr. President, docket 0692 has passed with one present.
Thank you very much, madam clerk, and thank you colleagues. All right, we are now moving on to personnel orders. There's quite a few of them, there's 15, so we are going to, it's the decision of the chair, we will not do roll call votes as a point of parliamentary procedure, particularly for our newer members. The way it typically works is when I call for a vote, ayes, ayes or nays, it'll be just a voice vote. Obviously you say aye or yea, yes or no or nay or no. Any councillor has the power with any voice vote to doubt the vote and you just simply say, I doubt the vote, and that means whomever is the chair of the meeting will then do a roll call vote. So doubting the vote, the other way you could say it is you'd like a recording of the yays and the nays. You may also have the right on a voice vote to ask that the clerk records you either as yes or nay. It's unlikely, but there are certain votes that would be a voice vote that you would like to whatever reason be on the record, being in support or being in opposition. So any questions on that before we proceed? We'll talk more about it later, but we're going to do voice votes for now. Madam Clerk, personnel orders, would you please read docket 0693?
Thank you. Docket 0693, councillor O'Malley for councillor Braden.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0693. Madam Clerk, or all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0693 has passed. Madam Clerk, 0694?
Docket 0694, councillor O'Malley for councillor Braden.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0694. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0694 has passed. Madam Clerk?
Whoops, I'm sorry.
No, please.
Docket 0695, councillor O'Malley for councillor Campbell.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0695. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0695 has passed.
Docket 0696, councillor O'Malley for councillor Campbell.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0696. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0696 has passed.
Docket 0697, councillor O'Malley for councillor Saby George.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0697. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 697 has passed.
Docket 0698, councillor O'Malley for councillor Saby George.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0698. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0698 has passed.
Docket 0699, councillor O'Malley for councillor Braden.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0699. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0699 has passed.
Docket 0700, councillor O'Malley for councillor O'Malley.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0700. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0700 has passed.
Docket 0701, councillor O'Malley for councillor Woo.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0701. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0701 has passed.
Docket 0702, councillor O'Malley for councillor Woo.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0702. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0702 has passed.
Docket 0703, councillor O'Malley for councillor Edwards.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0703. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0703 has passed.
Docket 0704, councillor O'Malley for councillor Edwards.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0704. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0704 has passed.
Docket 0705, councillor O'Malley.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0705. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0705 has passed.
Docket 0706, councillor O'Malley for councillor Bach.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0706. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0706 has passed.
Docket 0707, councillor O'Malley for councillor Bach.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0707. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0707 has passed. So that just saved us probably a half hour of needless roll call votes. Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, madam clerk. Now moving on to late files. I am informed by the clerk that there is a late file matter. The late file matter is a resolution sponsored by councillor Ed Flynn and I believe our wonderful city messenger, Ron Cobb, will be, are these, you've got him already, see? Ron Cobb is ahead of the game. Thank you to our great city messenger. We will take a roll call vote to add this item to the agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. For the first late filed matter, councillor Arroyo.
Yes.
Councillor Arroyo, yes. Councillor Baker.
Aye.
Councillor Baker, aye. Councillor Bach.
Aye.
Councillor Bach, aye. Councillor Braden.
Aye.
Councillor Braden, aye. Councillor Campbell.
Yes.
Councillor Campbell, yes. Councillor Edwards.
Yes.
Councillor Edwards, yes. Councillor Saby George.
Yes.
Councillor Saby George, yes. Councillor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councillor Flaherty, yes. Councillor Flynn.
Yes.
Councillor Flynn, yes. Councillor Mejia.
Yes.
Councillor Mejia, yes. Councillor O'Malley.
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley, yes. And councillor Woo. Councillor Woo. This has been unanimously placed before the body.
Thank you, madam clerk. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first and last clause and place this before our body?
Thank you. Offered by councillor Ed Flynn in the city council, resolution commemorating Memorial Day and honoring those who made the supreme sacrifice for our country. Whereas Memorial Day is observed on the last Monday of May to honor those who made, that made the supreme sacrifice while serving in the U.S. military. And whereas on other Memorial Day events include re-lying ceremonies at South Boston Vietnam Veterans Memorial, Medal of Honor Park, and at the Puerto Rican Veteran Memorial in the South End, and the city of Boston's veteran services and veterans organizations throughout the city are still safely and individually placing flags at our military cemeteries in honor of those that paid the supreme sacrifice for our country, including our Gold Star families. Now therefore be it ordered that the Boston City Council honors those who made the supreme sacrifice and service to our country, including our Gold Star families during Memorial Day, filed on May 26, 2021.
Thank you, madam clerk. Chair now recognizes the district councillor from South Boston, veteran of the United States Navy, councillor Ed Flynn. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, may I add councillor Flaherty as an original cosponsor?
You may. Councillor Michael Flaherty is hereby added as original cosponsor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President and to my colleagues, as we know, Memorial Day is coming up and it's a day for us to stop, it's a solemn day, but it's a day for us to stop and say a silent prayer and to recognize our sons and daughters that made the supreme sacrifice for our nation over these many years, including our Gold Star families that lost a son or a daughter as well. There are many Memorial Day events that are taking place across the city, whether it's in South Boston, the South End, or East Boston, or Jamaica Plain, Mata Pan. I'm going to attend several of them, but I always attend as a representative of this body and representing the city councillors and extending to the Gold Star families our deepest respect and admiration and in saying a prayer with them for their terrible loss and the suffering that they have endured for many years on behalf of our country. So Memorial Day is a day we remember the fallen. It's not a day we remember, it's not a day where it's a celebration, a weekend celebration. It's a day where we pay tribute to many families that lost a son or a daughter and whether it's at the South Boston Vietnam Veterans Memorial, where we have 25 men that died or killed in action, or in the Puerto Rican Veterans Memorial in the South End. Now there's a family that's missing a son or a daughter that will never be home for a wedding, for a birthday, for a kid's high school graduation. So we say a prayer with those families this weekend. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you very much, councillor Flynn. Chair now recognizes the at-large councillor from South Boston, councillor Michael Flaherty. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to echo obviously the comments of the previous speaker who sort of knows the space, but it's also an opportunity for us as a body to recognize the work that our colleague councillor Flynn does on behalf of veterans and Gold Star families. There's not an event, there's not a memorial, there's not a dedication involving veterans that our colleague councillor Ed Flynn does not attend, doing so obviously as a veteran himself in the United States Navy, but also doing it for all of us as an extension of sort of the council family and being a positive representative and reflection of this body at those memorials. Some of them are in his district and some are not in his district, some aren't even in the county, but he's there and he's there because of the importance of that particular event or a relationship that he has, or just because he cares particularly about our fallen heroes and our Gold Star families. So this Memorial Day when I wake up and obviously do as he says, say a prayer for the fallen and for their families, I'll also be thinking of our colleague councillor Flynn and for the great work that he does on behalf of veterans across the city and across the state and beyond. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Well said. You know what, I will suspend the rules and a round of applause, councillor Ed Flynn. Thank you, councillor Flaherty. Chair now recognizes the district councillor from East Boston, councillor Lydia Edwards. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I, I don't know, I couldn't have said it better, councillor Flaherty, about councillor Flynn's heart and dedication for those who have served and for the families who didn't get to receive them home. I do wanted to, I wanted to also acknowledge, I had spoken on the floor before about my great uncle Selman who integrated his troops and died in North Korea, saving people, bringing them down, and I was blessed to meet and know about his story from one of the friends who served with him on Heartbreak Ridge. But I also wanted to acknowledge today since in this moment, there are a lot of people who served and died for this country and never could truly serve as themselves. There are a lot of LGBT, and since Pride Month is coming up, I want to acknowledge a lot of the gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgendered individuals who served and died for this United States and the freedoms that this United States promised them and they never got to be who they really were. Their spouses and the people that they love never got those benefits, never got to be received, never got to lay the wreaths at the caskets, and many times they died quietly, deeply in love with someone and no one ever knew. And I want to acknowledge that because after Don't Ask, Don't Tell was then obliterated, then we allowed for people to be themselves and to be in the gender and to be transgendered out, and then Trump then took that away. And now we're bringing it back. And I just, that hopscotch and back and forth for people who were willing to die for the United States, I think it's just shameful that the military, that our politicians play that game. But because Pride Month is next month and we are dealing with Memorial Day, and I know that there are people who lived and died for this country and to be free and to love, and I just wanted to acknowledge them on this Memorial Day, they are nameless because many of them could never truly be who they are. So I wanted to say that as well on behalf of many of those proud, incredible patriots.
Well said. Thank you very much, councillor Edwards. Would anyone else like to speak on this late file matter? Would any councillor wish to add their name to this late file matter? Madam Clerk, please add councillor Arroyo, councillor Baker, councillor Bach, councillor Braden, councillor Campbell, councillor Edwards, councillor Saby George, councillor Mejia, councillor Woo. Please add the chair's name. And councillors Flynn and Flaherty are moving suspension of the rules and adoption of this late file matter. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. For the late file matter, councillor Arroyo.
Yes.
Councillor Arroyo, yes. Councillor Baker.
Aye.
Councillor Baker, aye. Councillor Bach.
Yes.
Councillor Bach, yes. Councillor Braden.
Aye.
Councillor Braden, aye. Councillor Campbell.
Yes.
Councillor Campbell, yes. Councillor Edwards.
Yes.
Councillor Edwards, yes. Councillor Saby George.
Yes.
Councillor Saby George, yes. Councillor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councillor Flaherty, yes. Councillor Flynn.
Yes.
Councillor Flynn, yes. Councillor Mejia.
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley.
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley, yes. And councillor Woo. Councillor Woo, yes. Mr. President, the late file matter filed by councillor Flynn has been unanimously adopted.
Thank you. Thank you councillors, once again. Moving on to green sheets, would anybody wish to move a matter from the green sheets? You may do so at this time. Seeing and hearing no takers, we're now moving on to the consent agenda. Been informed by the clerk that there is one addition to the consent agenda. The addition to the consent agenda is a resolution sponsored by councillor Ricardo Arroyo. All those in favor of adding this item to the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the late file consent agenda item resolution is hereby added. The chair now moves for the adoption of the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
For the consent agenda, councillor Arroyo.
Yes.
Councillor Arroyo, yes. Councillor Baker.
Aye.
Councillor Baker, aye. Councillor Bach.
Aye.
Councillor Bach, aye. Councillor Brayden.
Aye.
Councillor Brayden, aye. Councillor Campbell.
Yes.
Councillor Campbell, yes. Councillor Edwards.
Yes.
Councillor Edwards, yes. Councillor Saiby George.
Yes.
Councillor Saiby George, yes. Councillor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councillor Flaherty, yes. Councillor Flynn.
Yes.
Councillor Flynn, yes. Councillor Mahia.
Yes.
Councillor Mahia, yes. Councillor O'Malley.
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley, yes. And councillor Woo.
Yes.
Councillor Woo. The consent agenda, Mr. President, has been adopted unanimously.
Thank you very much. We're now moving on to announcements. Do any councillors have any announcements they'd like to share with the body? Okay. Next, oh, I'm sorry, I, the three lights just lit up. The Chair, I didn't see the order, so I'll go alphabetically. The Chair recognizes the District Council from Hyde Park, councillor Arroyo, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to take a moment, you know, I know that there's often, we can find the bad news, but I just want to talk about my late file, too. The consent agenda was to honor, Hyde Park Main Streets is honoring Elias Akiki, who, the at-large councillors I know, know who Elias Akiki is, has done a number of good deeds for Hyde Park. Started working in his family's garage at the age of 12, purchased it at the age of 19 with one employee, now employs 70 people in Hyde Park, has done, if I sat here and tried to run through all of the ways in which he's contributed to Hyde Park, it would be a very long announcement, so I'm not gonna do that. But I will note what he did most recently. The Anderson Tree lighting is a major Hyde Park event. It's, it's what we have, it's a, it's a traditional thing. It had to be canceled because of COVID. And so what Elias did was he got a Santa, he put him on the back of a tow truck, he